Call to order the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for June 16th, 2015. Please rise and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Fritsch? Here. Mr. Grundon?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Any corrections for the minutes of May 27th and June 2nd?
Can you split those, please? I wasn't here for one of them.
Okay, for May 27th? If not, do I hear a motion of approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
I've seen.
Motion passed four zero.
And do I hear approval, a motion of approval for the minutes of June 2nd, 2015?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
And call a roll, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Correspondence, item four, I'll start with Ed.
None here.
Steve?
None here.
Man, nothing?
I talked to one business owner about the vendors licenses, but that was something we're just working on, see if we can't do some more business in town.
Okay, and I had nothing. So we'll close that and go to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order, state open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out and sign the sheet provided on the podium. Went through all that for nothing. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. City managers' report, Steve?
The city website has information on Brown's Court, Cook Street, and Madison Street projects, so all the questions that Ed's been regularly asking me about Madison is on the website if you want to check. Gives you all the approximate dates for each issue. Cook Street does have a water interruption that's going to be coming up, so people may want to check that so they know when their water's going to be out. The dam advertisement is now on the website and will be going, will be in the paper for the next couple of weeks, so we're getting that project moving forward. Tonight on your table is the mass appraisal report for the city of Lake Mills prepared by Grodin Associates. And gives you a lot of information that I need to know, but I don't know if you're interested, but it's kind of boring.
I actually read it.
Katie's not here tonight, but we did around the corner with John McGivern on the 9th and 10th of June.
Oh, very well. Did that go good?
I guess we'll wait and see.
We'll see.
They told me I did fine, but I'm going to wait and see.
Okay, the star is born.
I'm not going to tell people who watch it if I don't like it. A meeting with WISDOT is scheduled for June 24th to discuss the detour. This meeting is sponsored by Senator Scott Fitzgerald, and we request that one council member attend. It is clear that the state legislature is having problems funding transportation projects. And it, and any request for additional funds is likely going to be a nonstarter. So we would like either the council president or the council vice president to attend this meeting to provide the council's vision for what's going to occur, and then we'll probably have to discuss what the likely true options are going to end up being. But I wanted, I wanted a council member there so that they knew that we, how we presented.
And you said the 22nd?
No, 24th.
24th?
At 1:00 here.
What day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
At what time?
1:00.
1:00.
Tomorrow at noon, I will be in Wisconsin Dells at the Wisconsin City Managers Board Meeting. I'm a member of the board. From 3:00 to 4:00, I will be coaching young municipal professionals. And then from 4:30 until 5:00, I will be sitting on the Ethics Board reviewing a couple cases that we have. Hopefully, I'll be home by around 8:00 tomorrow night, hopefully. I also want to send out a prayer for my friend Dean Sanders. He was hauled by ambulance Saturday night, and he's been in the hospital, so.
Oh, really?
I hadn't heard.
Yeah, well, our thoughts are with him. Anything else?
No, unless there are any questions.
I had a question, I can't remember what it was. I'll talk to you later. Item seven, acceptance of committee minutes. I have before me minutes of the Lake Mills Housing Authority of March 24th, 2015, Parks Board meeting of August 27th, 2014, Park Board meeting of November 19th, 2014, and the Parks Board minutes of April 15th, 2015. They'll go on, on record as read. Item eight, council business board committee appointments. I have a resignation of Zeta Hicks from the Lake Mills Housing Authority, and she's going to be moving, and she has been on the board for 14 years, and we should thank Zeta Hicks for all her service and many hours that she's been dealing with the Housing Authority, and wish her success in whatever comes her way. Steve, you have an appointment?
Yes, I would like to appoint Teresa Rassie to the Housing Authority to replace Anita Hicks.
Okay, and we just need to, we, do we confirm that?
No.
Okay.
It's just an appointment. I just need to notify.
Okay. Miscellaneous licenses. We have a lot of tavern renewals, and if you would read those names, Misty?
Tavern operator applications for license period July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2017 for renewals, Nancy Goodrow, Amanda Hepner, Eileen Hogg, Chris Coronius, Jackie Smith, Wayne Garnell, Alexander Koltenowski, Gillian Huey, Michael John Procheska, Robert Bleeker, Taylor Castilla Wagner, Matthew Clark, Christine French, Natalia Jacobson, Larry Jelkin, Ronald Cordy, Donald Lundey, Cindy Mitchell, Randy Pullman, April Stark, Dion Weishoff, Andrew Werner, Charles Wickliffe, Lori, Diane Widisch, and there's two Denise Munt and Jacob Ludlow that were in the group.
Okay. Do we have a motion of approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero on those applicants.
And I understand we have a couple of others. Would you read the name?
Do you want both of them?
Let's do one at a time.
Lisa Radel?
Do I have a motion of?
I'll make a motion to approve the license for Lisa Radel.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And the second one?
Christopher Geserta?
Do we have a motion of acceptance?
I'll make a motion to approve the tavern operator's license for Christopher Geserta.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
No.
Mr. Scharr?
No.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Three.
Three, two.
Oh, I'm sorry, three, two.
Item C, presentation of the 2014 financial statement from Hawkins Ash.
We have two, the well and golf tavern operators, no, just the well one.
Have a seat, we'll be with you in just a minute, sorry. I'm sorry. I guess I got to figure out how to use this contraption.
We have an application for private well permit for Lake Mills Golf Club.
This is, this is a renewal, right?
Correct.
Do I hear a motion of approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Was there another one?
Just that one.
Just that one, okay. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. Moving forward, I'm thinking that is the least amount of activity that has ever been before I was up to doing my financial statements. Either you're holding all your questions with me, or you've got something planned, and it's going to be showed to me.
Chuck, excuse me.
It's the good weather outside.
That microphone isn't working.
It's the good weather outside that does it.
Yeah. Okay, I believe we're going through the summary statement, is that correct, the small one? And obviously, if you have questions on the more complete one that I also provided, feel free to ask those as we go along, but items to note, if we go to page two on this summary statement, this is a memo from Steve.
Page two, I got to get it right.
There we go. This is the independent auditor's report. This is actually a summarized report that refers to the summarized financials that we have, but the item to note is the opinion at the bottom that we consider it presenting fairly the operations in summarized format of the city, and the city's financial had a clean opinion, okay? The city's financial, the full financial goes on for several pages, but the opinion on that was it's in, prepared materially correct in all material respects with the government and regular auditing standards. So you've got a clean opinion, that's what you've gotten, a view that I've been on this job, and I guess I would expect nothing less, even though Jim has gone on to maybe agree new pastures, and we've got new staff involved, it still was a clean opinion. If we're going to flip to page two, page three, note on this, this is a comparison of balance sheets between 13 and 14, and for those of you that were here last year, they do balance this year. We had a little typo in the last years, but yes, they are in balance. Items to note, your cash and investment line is up over last year. Principally, that's due to unspent bond proceeds that you had received sometime in the later half of 2014 that had not been spent at the end of the year. TIF number four, I think, had some electrical utility, water utility. Moving down, taxes is similar from year to year. If you look at the due from other funds, it's up about 1.1 million. Roughly a million of that is the TIF number four, or the electric utility back at the end of the year. So TIF number four's cash was up by, let's say, a million over what you would have had had you made that payment, and some of that was, the debt issues you had last year were complicated, let's just put it that way. You've got, you had several debt issues that had parts going in different directions. You had one that you borrowed for a short period of time, and then you borrowed long-term later on to pay off part of that short term, plus keep some for additional projects. Lot of moving parts last year. At the end of the year, the TIF did have a balance due to the electric utility, and that's one of the reasons that the due from other funds is up over the prior year. You'll notice two lines below that, the inventories are almost double of last year. Again, the electric utility has some huge projects that they're working on, a lot of costs that they're building up, inventory items that will turn into completed project down the road, and fixed assets down the road. Note the last line of the total assets, it's capital assets, less of accumulated depreciation. That is strictly the utility assets there. Last year, we kind of tried to put the, the assets of the city on and the long-term debt of the city, and it gets a little jumbled because that's not what you guys are used to seeing. You're used to seeing utility stuff is pretty much, yeah, long-term debt and fixed assets are includeable. When it's the city operations, yes, you know there's long-term debt out there, yes, you know you have fixed assets like this building, but you don't see them on your, on your monthly reports or anything you might get from, from Steve or Betsy, and that's why we didn't include that this year. It's just more comparable to what you typically would see if you go into the office and ask for information. The increase in the capital assets, though, for the utility is, again, utility projects, construction in progress was up a couple of million dollars. Again, major projects in, principally in the electric utility that had not been completed by the end of the year. Moving down toward the liability section, biggest thing you can see there is obviously long-term obligations, up a little over 4 million. Again, that's just the utility long-term that was, that was taken out last year, additional debt. And another item that thankfully balances, the due to other funds. Obviously, if you have receivable on one side that's due from other funds, the amount that the other fund show owing another fund should match, and it does, it's again 2.8 million, which is the 1 million above last year due to the TIF. Going down to the bottom, the deferred inflows of resources, that's principally your tax role. The tax role is not recognized as revenue until you actually get into that 2015 year. You've levered for it in, in December of '14, so it's out there. You just haven't, you don't have the rights to use it yet, so it's, it's a deferred item. And then that position at the bottom of the page, very similar from year to year. Next page after that is just a pie chart showing pretty much where the, where the revenue comes from for the city. And as you would expect with an electric utility, water utility, and sewer utility, they generate the largest amount of gross revenue for the, for the city. You can see you had $5 million of long-term debt proceeds, and the taxes and special assessments are 19% to 4.2 million. The rest of the items tend to vary from year to year, not, not major dollars or major percentages, I should say, in any of those categories. Moving on to page four, on page three, we showed what revenue was coming in, page four, we show kind of where you spent it. Oh, take that back. Let's go to, yeah, page four is the revenue coming in, pie chart preceded this. Items to note on the, on a revenue standpoint, again, about halfway down, you'll see the water utility, income, revenue basically unchanged from year to year. You are in the process of doing a rate case with the PSC, so there will be some increase in that revenue number next year. Obviously, it's not, at this point, I don't believe the rate case has been finalized, but from what I, talking to Betsy, you're also taking steps to try and figure out what are the laws, and change out of meters to get more accurate meter readings, and so some individuals may see a increase in their usage there for their bill, which isn't necessarily reflective just of rate increase. So I guess as council members, be prepared that you may get calls down the road once the rate increase goes in, and people may say, particularly if there are those changes of meters, they may say, geez, you know, I thought the rate increase was going to be 8%, how come my bill went up 12%? Well, more accurate readings hopefully means better utility revenue. Things very comparable from year to year. If you go down to the bottom, there's the proceeds from long-term debt. Obviously, more projects going on in '14 started. 2013 was what I would consider more of a typical borrowing year for you. 680 that you had in '13 was kind of your normal projects for capital equipment and that type of thing. Now, the next pie chart in the, in page five that follows that, that's the expenses, where the revenue was, where you spent the money that you took in. Public works is, again, by far the biggest amount, and in this case, you know, public works includes stuff like, other than utilities, street sidewalks, storm sewers, sanitation, recycling. So not a huge difference from year to year if you look at page five for some of those numbers, but again, adding them all up, it's over 50% of your expenses for the year. One item to note, if you're looking at, geez, last year versus this year sort of thing, sewer utility, you'll see the, the expenses for the sewer utility went down about a half million dollars. In 2013, you had a refund of impact fees to the tune of probably around $600,000 or so, between 500,000 and 600,000, I think. That was a one-shot repayment. You'd collected impact fees over the course of, I don't know, 15 or 20 years, then you had to refund them because you had collected excess. Again, it came out of a cash account, I believe, in '13, so when you paid that cash out, it showed up as an expense in the utility, non-recurring sort of item. If you go down, almost near the bottom, in the capital outlay section, you can see there's public works went from 880,000 up to 3.6 million. Again, we talked about the long-term debt that you borrowed, improvements in the TIF, that's tip, most of that increases due to the TIF number four improvements. And obviously, you all know that the idea behind the TIF is you invest now to recoup money later and increase tax base.
Actually, we cheat on that a little bit. We make sure that we have a developer ready to go, so that we know that we've estimated what his increment will be, and we know what we can spend. We're not quite put out, we've only done one TIF where we put it out with the hope that they come. Most of ours are done, we don't do any expenditures until we actually have a project in hand.
Wait, you mean like some sort of improvement, somebody comes in, developer, what have Okay, the last chart in page six shows you fund balances, this is your reserves that you have, how it changes from beginning of the year to the end of the year. As I said, there were not huge changes from any, you know, in total, you went from 24.7 to 25.5. If I do my math quickly, about a 3% increase. And if you, if you do the kind of beginning of the year, end of the year flyby, numbers are very consistent from, from year to year in almost all of the items except obviously the capital projects fund, because again, you have construction money coming in, and you haven't paid it all out at the end of the year. You know, when you really look at some of those numbers, I'm somewhat amazed at how close some of those beginning of the year, end of the year numbers are. And that's some of that, I mean, it's, it's, it's good budgeting, you're not, you're not in this to build up huge balances in any of your funds, but you do want to have enough in there to be able to sustain the, the operations into the future. I know that was pretty quick. Questions?
I guess everything's pretty straightforward, outlined well.
And obviously, if, if there are questions you find later on, or some, I mean, doesn't have to be about just this financial statement, there may be something that, geez, I just thought of this, how's that impact, what does the auditor think about it? Certainly feel free to contact Betsy, she will get you, get your question to me, I will answer as best I can.
Very well. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming tonight.
Pardon?
We appreciate you giving up your evening tonight.
Well, we were, we were in Warsaw the last two days, so it was a quick drive from Warsaw, well, two and a half hours, I know it's two and a half hours home, so it's, it's all part of the job, and we appreciate the, the chance to be of service to the, to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then I just want to thank Betsy, too. I saw the note in there, easy to work with, everything was in order, a lot of hard work went in, so thanks to you and the, and the staff as well.
Thank you.
Item D, this is a discussion on the chemical spraying in the parks, and we have Rob here to answer any questions. So why don't you, why don't you go ahead and start it off, Rob?
All right, let me give you a little bit of history of what type of spraying we do in the park, because I don't know if it's a little misconception of what we use, how we use it, things like this. The products we use is Roundup and a 24D product called Triplet. They're both over-the-counter products, very commonly used by homeowners. Our mix rate is two ounces of Roundup and one ounce of Triplet per gallon of water. My guys use three-gallon backpack sprayers, and what they do is they, they spot spray throughout the park. This isn't a broadcast-type spraying where you, you go out and go over the whole grass area like the lawn services do and do a coverage spraying. This is just a contact kill in certain areas that you're targeting. So in other words, you know, around our trees, where we want to prevent the grass and weeds from growing, so we're not hitting it with the weed eaters, lawnmowers, things like that. In our shrub beds, we utilize this product. Keeps our weeds down, keeps our man-hours down from just hand-pulling weeds. Sidewalks, parking lot, asphalt areas, any place where the grass is coming up through the pavement, infringing upon it, we'll use it in those locations. Underneath our ball field fences, in our ball field infills, these are areas that are very tough to try to weed eat with, so we use the product there. So we're not trying to eliminate, you know, our weed eating, we're just using this product in areas that are hard to weed eat, or using it in areas to protect, like our tree area. We try to do our applications in the morning, when the fewest people are in the park. The problem is, we have to deal with weather, we deal with The problem is we have to deal with weather. We deal with wind, rain, things like that. A lot of times, there's small windows of opportunity for my guys to get out and actually do the spraying. It's not as if we're out spraying in a park on a daily basis, a weekly basis. My guys might go through a park one day. They may not be back there for four weeks before they do another application in the park. So this is actually very low volume, low amount of actual chemical application in the park. We do have over 100 acres of parkland we do maintain. It is a very necessary tool for us to be using this product. We, like I said, again, we are using minimal amounts of it. You can go over to our park areas right now and take a look. We do have grass. We do have weeds coming up in our beds, around the trees, things like that. The idea of using this type of product is not to eliminate the weeds, we're just trying to minimize them. So when we go out to do the weed spraying, this isn't a ratification program. This is just a helpful tool for us to keep these areas under control.
Questions?
Yeah, so some of the main concerns that popped up because of this, it, it really started out with some phone calls. The main concern at first was, was spraying right before they were setting up for the farmer's market. I don't know the timeframe, how close it was, anything like that. The other concern that was brought up was marking what's been sprayed and if, Steve, I don't know if somebody could speak to that, just so we can get that out there, that my understanding, we aren't under any obligation to mark where we're spraying, things like that.
Well, we're not. I think we are responsible for that and we have decided to mark. We probably, what we do is we're not a huge management group and we have our, we give our employees the, the full opportunity to make their own decisions. And so like Rob said, the conditions were right on that Wednesday to spray. And the employee made the decision to spray and we support that. We didn't have any problem with that. We probably should have marked. I don't know, we're not required and, but we should have and we will from now on. We, we will do everything we can not to spray on the farmer's market day, but that being said, you know, if weather conditions and other things drive us to do that, then our, and our employees make that decision, then I, then I'm going to be obligated to support them because that's, you know, I've given them the power to do that and I think they should be able to do that. So while we, I guess what I tried to point out was is that we do absolutely the minimum chemical use possible for very little areas. We don't spray a lot of chemicals like a lot of other agencies would. We aren't completely mechanical in the fact that we would weed, weed everything or that we would use heat methods to control it because we're absolutely opposed to using chemicals. We, we feel chemicals have their place and, and they can be used appropriately. But that being said, we, we will reach out and try to make sure that we are as responsible as we can be in our use.
On, on that morning, the individual made a decision to go right away at seven o'clock in the morning, go out to spray.
Monday and Tuesday had interrupted. Monday and Tuesday were very windy. There was, they were not conducive to spraying at all and you and I met on Wednesday as market manager, not as, as council member, and I asked the question and, and you pointed out to me, and I wanted to make it for public record, that you had given that in your instructions for the week, that spraying was to be done, if you remember telling me that, and then Monday, they couldn't spray, Tuesday, they couldn't spray due to the wind. Wednesday morning, it was dead calm at the time that they went out to spray.
And you have to realize in our park system, there's parks like Sandy Beach Park that is used every single day. You know, farmer's market is just one example of a park being utilized. We're dealing with people on a daily basis in all different park areas, ball fields, things like that. So, you know, we do our best to apply any of these chemicals, you know, to give the maximum amount of timeframe between application and potential people being out there.
I think we were very responsible, you know, probably a couple of things we could do better and we'll work at that, but I, I think we did a job that's reasonable within the expectations that we have for being able to maintain the, the lawns and the manpower and, and tools that we have available to us.
I'd like to bring up one thing because I fielded, I feel, I, I fielded a bunch of questions as the market manager that day because they did put out signs on that Wednesday that it had been sprayed and then people were concerned because their, you know, vegetables were being sold. But there was the lag time. Rob, what is the lag time for the drawing of the Roundup that was used? And again, it wasn't a broad field over the whole thing. It was just around the trees and the sidewalks, but just for public listening clarification, that was done early in the morning. There was at least, the market starts at two. There was at least probably three to five hour timeframe in there for the, the Roundup to dry and it really only needs, what is it? Do you remember?
I don't remember.
About an hour or two hours at the most.
Actually, Roundup's like an hour for rain. I mean, once it's dry, it's done. I mean, like a 10-minute deal.
Yeah, the, the actual placards that get put out, you know, one of the hard parts of doing it in a situation in a park property where you have, you know, multiple acres, is A, where do you put these placards, you know, to inform the public? Because, say, the Commons Park area, you have people entering all different areas through there. Plus, you're doing spot spraying. You know, if you're not doing an entire lawn application, you can put a sign at, at one of the sidewalks and there might not be an application done hundreds of feet away. So it's very hard to placard when you're doing just spot spraying, opposed to when you're doing a complete lawn and you can put the placards out there with people comprehend then that you completely sprayed the lawn.
I'd like to take the opportunity to bring up just the reverse of what we were talking about. There was a concern here about the spraying. But I look at Commons Park and I look at the weeds that are there and I really, and for some time, have felt that we need to be spraying the park to, to reduce the broad leaves and give the grass a chance to grow. Not having a lush, Better Homes and Gardens, if we would say, thick blush lawn, but at least to have a lawn that is, that is, the, the kids that play in the park are on grass, not on, on broadleaf that touches broadleaf. And it's really bad in the park, in Commons Park, as the broad leaves continue on an annual basis to get stronger and take over. And Rob, you and I had spoke about that. Can you relay what you would see as, as a way to approach that? Where we're just doing a minimal weed control, but this, we're talking about a full park application?
I get many more calls regarding why are we not doing more chemical applications in the park? And, and my end of it, it's one of those cans of worms. I didn't want to open up because I know there's environmental concerns, there's health concerns from the public where I didn't want to have the target on my back being the one promoting it. But since this was brought up, I do get a lot of phone calls regarding, you know, park areas, ball fields, cemetery. The biggest nemesis out there is our dandelion. We go through and we mowed today, within a day, within a two, those dandelions are back up the same height as they were the, two days ago. Now you're trying to explain to individuals how their kids are playing when the dandelions are eight inches tall. You try to explain to the neighbor, when your dandelions are going to seed and they got a nice lush lawn, you know, why aren't we treating our, our facility? It's hard on my end because every dollar we put then towards herbicide application on the property is, is potentially a dollar away from taking care of the park in another way. So it, it's something that I have not brought up, but since Ed had brought it up, I think it's a fair concern that we could look at doing a broader range of grass applications to control at least the dandelions.
How would we go about doing that? That would be a granular in the spring?
I would recommend hiring a company to come in and do it. And my recommendation would probably depend on which park it is, what we're looking to achieve. If we're looking to achieve a weed and feed, in other words, we're going to try to kill some of the broad leaves and feed the grass, like I'd recommend up in Commons Park, we could probably go granular. If, like on our ball fields or at Walls Park, we, we got a very nice stand of grass, we don't want to encourage that thing to grow any longer. We're mowing that already twice a week and it's just, has its mind of its own and just keeps growing. I'd recommend probably doing a liquid application just to, to take care of the broad leaves and not put down any fertilizer on that.
There's a lot of data out there, though, that granular, that combines a fertilizer and a, and a herbicide or pesticide breaks down too fast and runs off in rain and particularly in a park like Commons, you'd end with, up with it all in the stormwater, running right into the creek over here. So some type of spray application would probably be better or two separate types of, two separate granular applications, one with a fertilizer and one with a herbicide would probably be a better option.
Well, I think, probably should, if you want to pursue that, Ed, I think you should go ahead and put it on the agenda as an agenda item and
or we could wait until budget and discuss.
Definitely going to have to do that, yeah, because it's, it's not going to be cheap, so.
Is it something that should go to, that could be discussed at park board?
That's probably where it should start.
Well, because, you know, I think we've got professionals here that know what they're doing and I don't know why we're sitting here discussing what brand to put on the park at the council level.
About brand. A quick question on the, on the spot spraying. I mean, you send your guys out with a three-gallon tank. Any idea how much mowing and weeding you save by doing that? I mean, how many man-hours are, are we banking because we do that?
I couldn't calculate that.
But damage to trees too, Steve, because remember that
Well, yeah, I know, and that's the weed whacker hitting the trees and trying to do gutters and edging and all that.
And you just go down the street and look at the, the trees we planted and the grass that grows up around them and they're weed eating around the trees and the damage that's done to them. We're trying to avoid that in the park system.
Okay.
Well, I think just, just by virtue of, of signing, when you do that, should, that should satisfy the public as far as, you're not going to satisfy everyone. There's going to be people that don't want it at all. There's going to be people that want it more, but at least telling them what you did and this'll, this'll be on the web in the minutes and they can get a little bit of a background of why, why Rob does what, what he does and, and the staff does what they do and I think you do a great job and I personally want to thank the staff for all the hard work they do, especially in the summertime. I mean, they're just going constantly. So, kudos for the staff.
I'll let them know.
I, I thought that since you're managing the Lake Mills Rainforest, that you've been doing a super job because everything is gigantic and growing like weeds, even when they're not a weed.
Well, thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having us.
Ask a few questions.
What is this flowering tree on North Main Street, on the street trees?
Japanese lilacs with the white flowers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chinese.
Ivory silk, Japanese lilac.
Ivory silk, Japanese lilac.
You want one?
No, I want to know because people have been asking me.
Okay, well, thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Item E, discussion and decision on a Class B beer license for Lewis Station Winery, 217 North Main Street. Misty?
We don't have a written motion on this. This was a request that came in to add the Class B beer license for Lewis Station to their, they had just received their Class B winery at the last meeting.
Oh, okay, I got it. Sorry. I'm with you now. Okay.
Is this a renewal?
No, it's a new.
No, it's a new.
They had a wine license. They're asking now for a beer license in addition to the renewal on the wine license. Vicki, question on that. Did we, can we, is it a mute point or do we have the ability to approve beer for the Lewis Station?
The only one that controls the liquor as far as
Well, in the, in the discussion item stuff that we had, we, there was the, whether or not it was legal at the state level for that.
I believe that Misty received some information from the state regarding that. Maybe she could address that.
Mr. Lewis had provided information because there was question on whether or not it was legal and he provided a memo from the state and above the conclusion, it's talking about the Department of Revenue, which is responsible for interpreting, interpreting and forcing chapter 125 is, 125. It was advised that in their conclusion that a winery may hold a Class B beer license. So while the law doesn't seem to be clear, Department of Revenue is saying that yes, they can. That's their
I was confused when I read that and that's why I asked.
And in their conclusion, they're not, they're not stating 100%. They're just saying that Department of Revenue is saying yes, that, that's their interpretation that they can.
Okay. And this was a discussion decision, so I would make a motion to approve the request for Lewis Station Winery to receive a Class A combination of liquor and beer license.
And do we have a second?
It's a Class B.
Oh, it's just a Class A.
Just Class B beer.
Oh, Class B.
I dropped down a line, sorry.
I'll, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Item F is discussion and decision on a request for a Class A combination liquor beer license for Dollar General at 528 East Lake Street. Do we hear a motion of approval? Hearing none?
I'd like to ask for update by council.
Okay. As I had provided a memo to you, the Dollar General corporate offices, which are in Tennessee, finally responded Friday afternoon. They called me directly, wanted to know what the problem was about where they were storing their alcohol and I said, it's not a problem about where it's being stored, it's where it's being put on display for sale. And the, I explained to the individual from Tennessee and she said, if it's a matter of moving it so that it can be seen by the cashier, we can take care of that very quickly. Then I got a phone call from a gentleman from Iowa that's also working for Dollar General Corporate and he provided me with the floor plan that he had redrawn where they're showing me where they would move the, the beer and wine to, they wanted to make sure that that was acceptable because they didn't want to keep moving it around until we hit on a spot that would work. And we gave you a smaller-sized version that showed the entire store, which is very difficult to read and Misty blew up a corner of the store that possibly, well, I guess the way that Steve has it oriented is different than how it's on our, our screen, but it's all on your iPad as version two and the doorway leading out of the store is right there where Steve is pointing on the screen. And the cashier, the main cashier, has that number one by it where Steve is also pointing. The other two cashiers are, are further back from one. There's a bank of three cashiers together, but the main one, if they're only having one, is the one that's at the front. And you'll notice that where that person would be standing, they can look down the hallway or the aisle way and where they're proposing to move the beer and the cooler is straight back to those two coolers where Steve is now pointing. And where they're proposing to put the beer and wine are right next to that at a 90-degree angle from where that, the cooler is. from where that, the cooler is. Whereas where the beer and wine currently is, is way on the other side of the ice cream where Steve is pointing now. I think what probably occurred is Dollar General lays out these stores and they said, "This is how it's going to be laid out" and nobody said, "Well, wait a minute, we have this condition on our, our liquor license that the beer and wine have to be located where they can be seen by the cashier." As soon as they got the word, why they didn't read the letter I sent, maybe I sent it to the wrong person in Tennessee, but as soon as they did get the word on Friday, they were on the phone immediately, they intend to have that moved in a week. And first they drew up the plans and now they want to see if that's acceptable. I said, "It looked like it would probably be acceptable," but that I couldn't give the final say on that and that I was going to present it to the council for tonight to see if the council wanted to, based on that drawing, at that location, approve the, the renewal of the liquor license rather than us having our hearing next Tuesday. I, I pulled back from doing anything more with the hearing on the non-renewal, waiting to find out what the council would say tonight. If the council is completely opposed to renewing their license, they're, they are making an effort to, to move their inventory so they can be in compliance. But if I need to, I can serve the complaint tomorrow and you can have a hearing.
Well, I'm glad to hear that they finally heard us. I think that that was what our goal was to begin with. And, yeah, I personally think that that's a much better site for the clerk than where they currently have it. It's impossible for the clerk to see where it is at the current location.
Correct.
So if they're willing to do that, I don't have any problem with renewing their license.
And...
Did they say how long?
How long they can do that?
No, how long it would take to reconfigure everything?
I can let them know tomorrow morning and hopefully they can get it done within a week.
I would have the, still, I, I like everything that has been spoken of, but I still would have a concern in that turquoise blue area on the iPad. If those stacks are high enough, they can impair visibility in the corner. Granted, you need to use every foot of your floor space, but that would need to be a lower area where the clerk could see over the merchandise.
I believe the clerk can. I spent a lot of time pacing around there yesterday once I got the drawing. And it's a, like a news rack and a potato chip rack and DVDs. And if my recollection is correct, it's lower than...
They're shorter than the Gatorade cooler.
Yeah, and that you can see, certainly if there are underage kids in the aisleway, I would think that a clerk would see and then pay attention.
I guess I would like you, if you're going back to them on, should this be approved, that that be conveyed back to the corporate office?
Did that not be higher than where it currently is?
Right. Not to impair, higher to impair visibility.
I think that's been conveyed. I mean, the, the whole gist of it is to have the, the liquor where it can be a hundred percent positively viewed. And I think they, I think, I think they finally got it.
Yeah, we already had that problem in the past, that's why I brought this up again, because they did bring it forward when it was over on the other side, but then they put stacks in front and display stuff and you couldn't even see it from the clerk area. And they did remove it after we complained. Just like to have it conveyed up front to them.
Yeah, I already had conveyed it to the individual from Iowa that drew this up. Misty just pointed out that the turquoise area that's to the wall of the store, that's actually the shopping carts. Those three things that are between the shopping carts and the aisle are the three wheeled carts that I mentioned that my recollection is, is that they're shorter than I am. And they're not very deep, they're like this far deep. So I, I believe that it probably is workable there. I looked at their whole floor plan and wondered, well, where else could they put it? And was kind of at a loss for where it would end up going if we insisted on moving it.
And as you pointed out, there really hasn't been any, any alcohol thefts.
No, I, I ran a records check from the PD today and the store has been in business going back at least to 2005. They were licensed in 2011. They have had, I guess it's five incidents of retail theft in the last ten years. But since they've been licensed, there were only two incidents, one in 2015 and one in 2012. I asked the PD to pull those cases to see what was stolen. It was donuts and soda. So, so far, we don't have any record of anybody being charged with retail theft of alcohol out of the store. And it is a little ways back from the doorway, the clerk is practically on the doorway and the alcohol is relatively far back into the store. So somebody would have to get from the alcohol location out through the doorway without the clerk seeing them. So it's probably, it's up to you, but it might be deemed to be acceptable where the location is now.
I agree with that. If, if we've, when you speak with them, just reiterate that we would like a, a clear line of sight from the clerk to the area of the beer and wine because I, you know, not all the, some of the clerks aren't any taller than I am. And so, just...
Okay, so let me, let me ask again, is, would somebody like to make a motion of approval?
I'll make a motion.
I was going to ask, can, can we, can I make one that's contingent upon them completing this in like two weeks? Or do we have to just approve or deny?
Well, right now, they have a license until the end of June.
Till the thirtieth?
Right. So unless you wanted to do something to suspend it or revoke it, they, they are licensed until the thirtieth. One would hope that now that we have their attention, that they could get it done before the thirtieth or before July first.
They said a week, the thirtieth would be two.
Right.
I mean, that's fair.
And I could certainly contact, I have everybody's phone numbers and I can certainly contact them all tomorrow morning and let them know and then I could send them an official letter along with whatever Misty puts together so that they know absolutely what the terms are.
So the, the approval could be based on completion by Jan, or July first?
I would think so because if you tied it to this particular floor plan, saying that this is what you have found to be acceptable, as long as those displays aren't too tall. And you're renewing it starting July first, that you want the actual location of the alcohol to reflect exactly what's in that floor plan and that any deviation from that would be a violation of the condition. And we can take it from there and hope that they take it to heart.
Okay. Is that acceptable?
That works.
Do you want to make a motion, then?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the Class AB liquor license via floor plan number two, being completed by the end of June, June thirtieth.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Misty, call the roll?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Discussion decision on no-fault sewer backup insurance, which is currently tabled. Do we hear, have a motion to untable it?
I'll make them. I'll second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, and in our, gotta get this contraption back.
I like, I like this thing.
Okay, the, the memo from, from Elizabeth was that the bottom line was that it's a good idea to get it.
Yes, I think it could be a benefit.
And that was based on, we, we had, we had tabled it because we wanted input from Jim.
Right, right.
Okay.
And, and Jim did feel that it was a benefit to, to our customers.
Okay, and then also that, that the, the fee would be paid through the utility, from the utilities and not the tax roll, right?
And that's correct.
It always has been. Well, as, as long as I've been here.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
I'd like to ask to have the motion...
I guess we got to make a motion, yeah.
Motion read.
Yeah. So, yeah, why don't, would you read the motion again?
City Council Motion 15-6-2-1, No-Fault Sewer Backup Coverage 2015-2016. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section 1, the City of Lake Mills has considered the benefits and costs of no-fault sewer backup insurance coverage in the event a backup occurs through no negligence on the part of the sewer utility. Section 2, that the City Council considered the information presented and determined that the no-fault sewer backup insurance will be added to the policy. Section 3, the City Treasurer/Finance Director is directed to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said policy. The City Council does hereby approve this motion and authorizes the Council President to sign the motion.
Do I hear a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second, please.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
There's nothing on that next one, is there, Steve? That's a mute point. H?
Yes. It's left on the agenda, you mean the, yeah. It was left on the agenda because we hadn't had any official word yet. There was a discussion that was held between myself and Karen Crosby where I thought that they were going to withdraw that proposal and put them in the library in the municipal building. But I haven't got anything official yet, so I'm, I'm waiting to hear from them.
Actually, I called Karen, I actually had set up a lift for the tree and she said, "We won't need it. We're going with indoor, less hassle." So they will be displayed, I think they're already up in the library, some other buildings, so.
Yeah, so I, I think that's a good, that we can remove this from the agenda.
So be it. Discussion decision on pavement specifications for the Main Street Annex. This is motion 15-6-2-2 and we have some blanks to fill in.
Yes, and you probably want to listen to me for at least a little bit.
Yeah.
As boring as that might be. The first item on back is an email from Vicky Romanesco, the project engineer for Wistat. And she called and that, you remember, we selected option three from the options that we had for this annex area just off the street. And so now she's asking what stand, standard specifications we want to use and she laid out three different specs. One is the concrete built to their standards, one is the asphalt built to their standards and one is asphalt built to what's, the city would build for parking lots or minor streets. So when you read the motion, it could be a little confusing, but alternate three is the plan we had used when we originally had selected the type of, of layout we wanted in the downtown area. So this is, this is alternate three. And now what they're doing is they're proposing what standard specifications. We recommend that they go with the concrete to state standards. You want it to look consistent, you want to be, you want to have the best possible and really the, the amount of additional money is not significant in comparison to what the long-term benefits of the, of the standards would be, so.
That's our dime too, right?
That's our dime, it's all our dime because it's all parking.
Okay.
So the one proposal that she had, I think, was, the top one was $20,000, the most expensive one.
That's the concrete?
That's the concrete.
That's a concrete pavement that will match the proposed mainline concrete thickness. And, and you want to do that anyways because concrete, that doesn't match thickness, doesn't match, doesn't do very well. So then you'd want to flip to asphalt. And I think that's why she only left us that one, a concrete option. But from a staff perspective, we feel that's the best one, but obviously it's your decision, so. We would lay this out as, I already listed alternate three, we could go with these as A, B, C, and D. The first one there, the concrete would be A. The aggregate to their standards would be B and then the minor one would be C. So if you read the motion, it would be alternate three with alternate A at $20,000 or alternate three with alternate B at $17,000. Are there any more questions on any of the...
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little in the fog here. I don't know if my question's because of the computer or if it's because I just don't have the answer. But I found, you know, the map that you had, that I saw, but I am not finding where the three...
They're under dots, email. Look under the second one, it says dot email. Diane?
Yeah, it's the email from Vicky Romanesco.
Yeah, but I mean, her, okay, her three though, does the plan stay the same on all three?
Yes, the layout stays the same.
Layout doesn't change.
It's the materials that they use to construct it that changes. So you would see, the most significant difference would be between the concrete and the asphalt. So the Main Street is going to be built with concrete. So if you built, built this with concrete, you wouldn't notice a significant amount of difference. If you flipped to the asphalt one, the one standard would still be very similar to the dot standard. The third one would be significantly less in overall standard. But when you looked at it, you wouldn't be able to tell. It would still look like an asphalt street. You would have to cut the pavement open and dig down two feet in order to be able to tell the difference between the three proposals.
Well, based on the staff's recommendation, it's an $8,000 difference because one's 20.5 and the other's 12.5. I would like to make a motion to the council that we fill in. We're staying with, of course, the four, the, the floor plan of alternates of three, but I would say we go with alternate one at the cost of 20.5.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I mean, it's going to look the same and we're going to have the, so we'll have the same continuity and look and we'll have a material that'll last much longer.
So the vote will be on, on alternate three, which we already voted on and going with the state standard concrete at $20,500?
Yep.
Any other discussion?
We can just fill that in, Vicky, without a vote and then vote on the whole amendment or we have to do both? You know, in the past, we've just filled it in kind of on consensus. So we can just fill it in under consensus?
Right, right.
I agree.
Call the vote?
I'll make a motion then for, that we approve, motion 15-6-2-2 with the alternate one, which is the concrete at the cost of $20,500.
I'll second that.
I think we did that twice, but...
We did that with...
First time Steve seconded it.
Three times, that's all right.
Even better.
All right, call the vote now.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
I will let her know tomorrow.
This time we did it, I had no clue what we were doing, so it's good we did it again.
Yes.
Okay, item J, Resolution 15-25, amending... Okay, item J, Resolution fifteen dash twenty-five, amending impact fees. Read the motion, Misty?
Resolution number fifteen dash twenty-five, adjustments to impact fees. Whereas, the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, has established impact fees in accordance with Wistat's sixty-six point zero six one seven. And whereas, the municipal code of the City of Lake Mills requires the impact fees to be adjusted as of July one on a yearly basis by an amount equal to the previous calendar year average consumer price index. And whereas, United States Bureau of Labor Statistics has determined the two thousand and fourteen average consumer price index to be one point six percent. Now therefore, be it resolved that the impact fees in the City of Lake Mills are as follows. Sanitary sewer, one point oh inches, one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars. One point two five inches, four thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars. One point five inches, seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars. Two point oh inches, twelve thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. Greater than two point oh inches, as determined by the Public Works Board. Water, one point oh inches, two thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars. One point two five inches, five thousand nine hundred ten dollars. One point five inches, nine thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Two point oh inches, sixteen thousand twenty-seven dollars. Greater than two point oh inches, as determined by the Public Works Board. Parks facilities, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars. Senior Community Center, two hundred fifty-nine dollars. Be it further resolved that these impact fees are effective July one, two thousand and fifteen.
Before we, before we, I, um, ask for a, uh, adoption motion, Steve, the sewer, are those numbers right?
Yes.
I mean, the...
They have been...
A one-inch sanitary sewer?
Well, no. What they do is, is we use the water meter to determine the flows in the sanitary sewer. So, when it says that it's a, it's a half inch or one and a half inch, 'cause all sanitary sewer are six inches or bigger. But what we're doing is, we use the water meter to determine both the water use and the sanitary sewer use. That's why we have meters that determine outside use.
Okay. Well, thanks for keeping me straight on that one, I, I was confused. So, do I have a motion of approval of, um, fifteen dash twenty-five, amending impact fees?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
That would be a pretty small sewer.
Yeah.
Some of us have a problem getting some stuff through there.
Any, any further discussion? So, we're, so, um, we're raising the cost by one point six percent based on the, um, Consumer Price Index for two thousand and fourteen.
We, uh, no, we agreed this year that the water would continue to operate like this. We did the impact fee assessment, and we agree, and the report came back, and the council, the Public Works Board and the council agreed that we would continue to use this process for water. We are still in the process of doing the sewer ones, and I anticipate sometime later this year, we'll have a report that'll probably reduce the sewer ones.
Okay.
Uh, but that, right now, we are still under the current system, and so, this is what'll occur.
Okay. Any other discussion? Misty, if you would?
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Resolution fifteen dash twenty-six, Misty, if you would?
Resolution fifteen dash twenty-six, withdrawal from the Local Government Property Insurance Fund. Whereas, the current state budget is expected to eliminate the Local Government Property Insurance Fund. As a result, the estimated premium for property insurance for the City of Lake Mills increased fifty-eight percent. And whereas, the State of Wisconsin Local Government Property Insurance Fund requires City Council action to withdraw. Now therefore, be it resolved, the sixteenth day of June by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, that the city wishes to withdraw from the Local Government Property Insurance Fund. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is directed to sign the attached form and submit to the Local Government Property Insurance Fund to officially withdraw.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
And Elizabeth, we were going with a different carrier?
Um, we are still trying to find one. I just wanna have everything in place so that we can move forward. Our, our policy expires the end of this month, and if I can get something in place by July first, I wanna do that. The state will allow me to go a couple months into the next policy year without having penalty to withdraw, but they're only gonna give me a couple months.
Okay.
So, it needs to happen as soon as possible, and I don't wanna pay those higher premiums.
Yeah, I hear you.
We're gonna try to...
Fifty-eight percent's a little bit unreasonable.
Yes, right. But the problem is, is us, as well as all kinds of other municipalities, are trying to find other coverage. So, those underwriters are working hard to get these quotes out there.
Okay, you need to...
Does this resolution give you the authority to go and do everything you need to do? Or does this come back to us when you find what you want?
Well, it, it won't have to do a resolution like we had to when we first got into the Local Government Property Insurance Fund. Because, you know, because it was a government fund, that's why we needed the resolution. We won't need to do that with a private company, which is where we have to go now.
So, this gives you what you need?
Yes, yes.
We're, we're probably, um, looking at the, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Insurance Program, and so, it'll come through a similar package to the rest of our insurance that we've been looking at, that Betsy's been working with.
Right.
Won't guarantee it, but, but we're working hard to make that a package deal.
Sounds good.
Misty, call the vote?
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Motion fa- passed five zero.
Okay, ordinance, I mean, item I, ordinance eleven forty-nine, request to amend zoning from general one to planned industrial P one, chapter two incorporated, and then a parcel, uh, three oh five South CP Avenue. This is the third reading. Would you read it except for, you know, the... I don't, wait a minute.
It's not very long.
Okay, go ahead then.
Just read it. Ordinance eleven forty-nine, amending section ten dash three dash two dash A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel two four six zero seven one three, one three one three zero two zero, three oh five South CP Avenue. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section ten dash three dash two dash A, the official zoning ordinance and map of the City of Lake Mills, are hereby amended to zone the following described property from I one, general industrial, to PI, planned industrial, as depicted in the attached map, to wit, parcels two four six zero seven one three, one three one three zero two zero, three oh five South CP Avenue. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Uh, Vicky, what, what does, what is the, is this a, just a housekeeping thing, or is it...
Primarily, uh, it's, are we zoning that little piece?
No.
No, then Steve's gonna have to tell you what it is.
Chapter two was located in these sites here. They bought this land over here.
Uh-huh.
Um, they combined that into one lot, because we don't allow businesses to cover more than one lot. Well, this lot was under a different zoning than this lot, so they had to pick which zoning they wanted.
Oh, I see.
For the whole lot. And so, they came back and selected the zoning. And so, it's just, it's a housekeeping deal to be consistent. Technically, you can't have the same lot with two different zonings.
Well, do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item M, M, ordinance eleven fifty.
Ordinance eleven fifty, amending Public Works Board meeting notice requirements. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills amends section two dash eight dash two dash A of the Lake Mills Municipal Code as follows. Meetings, section A, time and place. Meetings of the board shall be held regularly at a time and place decided by the board. At least one meeting shall be held in each calendar month unless the board has no business to conduct. Additional meetings may be called by the president or by two of the six voting members. Notice of each meeting shall be provided as required under Wisconsin Statues nineteen point eight four. Section two, this ordinance is sponsored by Council Representative Rudy Shar. Section three, any ordinance or part thereof that is inconsistent or in conflict herewith is hereby expressly repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance, and I'd also like to request to suspend the, uh, second and move right to the third reading.
You're asking for a vote tonight, or just...
Yeah, because it's housekeeping. It's the same thing that we did.
Yeah, otherwise, it's gonna cost us, the city, more money.
We have to publish the agendas in the paper and pay money. And what we'll do is post them, just like we do the City Council agenda.
So, I'm looking for a second?
Second.
Uh, Vicky?
Yeah, this, this ordinance is an anomaly. Typically, our boards don't specifically say that the agenda has to be published. This one just came out of left field that it says that, and, uh, Misty caught it and said, "Oh, we have to publish these agendas until we can get this taken care of," so that's why this ordinance was drafted. Normally, your notice requirement is as required by the state statute. So, this would bring it into compliance with how we do it for everybody else, all the other boards. It won't be that we're specifically required to publish an agenda in the newspaper.
So, do, can we go ahead and, and, uh, ask for a motion of adoption for this to the third reading?
That's what she did.
Okay, so, now, we got a second, right? We got a second? Any discussion? Go ahead and call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
An addendum, I was on the board, on the committee, on the council when we put this in originally. Our reason for putting it in originally was to make sure that the public knew when the meetings were, because we wanted everybody to know that they could come to the Public Works Board meetings. We're not saying that that changes, we're changing how it happens.
How we advertise.
Yeah, how we advertise it, so we're still doing...
And it's definitely on the website.
Right, exactly.
With the, uh, the, the minutes and the agendas, so, yeah, it's...
Back at the time that the Public Works Board was formed, the council wanted to make sure that there couldn't be meetings without, without letting the public know there was a meeting. We wanted to make sure it was a public, Public Works Board.
Okay, well, thanks for that background.
Mm-hmm.
Recommendations for, um, future agendas?
I have a question on, 'cause I, I'm not asking to put it on, but, because I think that the weeds, the weed application control needs to go to the Parks Board first. But, uh, how do we get it on the Parks Board is the question I have? 'Cause if we were doing it tonight, I would say that we'd like to see a, um, on the agenda, uh, a discussion to review the policy, whether we keep the current broadly weed application, uh, control of the whole area as is, or do we want to change it? 'Cause as is, is none right now.
Have the, uh, council member?
Yeah, we can get it on the agenda for July.
Okay, Steve, if you could see to get it on their, their agenda, that's the appropriate place to start with it.
Anything else? Okay, uh, at this point, we're gonna convene into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one, paragraph, "E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties and negotiating contracts and/or leases. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons requires a closed session." And Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to be involved. Do I hear a motion to convene in a closed session?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And the roll, vote, please.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, so we'll reconvene in closed session in a small...